Fabulous. Okay, so Julia, you can let anybody else in if they're here.
Thank you.
And I'm going to have the agenda right here. Call the meeting to order. And I would like a motion to allow for remote participation as written in the agenda.
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote, in alphabetical order by town.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Very good. That means that everybody's volume control is working too, which is nice to know. Just a brief comment. Due to a family medical issue, there is a chance that I may have to leave the meeting in the middle. Probably to come back, maybe not. And I've already talked to Alice about it and she will then take over the running. It will be smooth as silk. Okay, very good. My understanding, Julia, is it still true that we had no public, written public comments for the chair to speak during this meeting? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So just for partly for Linda's sake and also as a reminder, when we do have, in most of our regular meetings, not in specially scheduled ones, most of our regular full school committee meetings, we do allow for public comments, which is optional, but we allow for it. If we are in person, then the commenters can just show up and make whatever comment they want, as long as they're within the bounds of the policy. If we are remote, then they have to submit the comments in advance and the chair is the one who actually reads the comments to the meeting. And so at this point, we have none for this meeting, so we move on. The consent agenda, now I'm going to recommend that we take the minutes outside of the consent agenda, vote on the consent agenda and do the minutes separately, and you'll see why in a few minutes. So if there's no objection, I'm going to state that the consent agenda consists of the approval of list of monthly grants, monthly donations, and surplus property. And just a reminder that the consent agenda of the items that are uncontroversial, and that we can kind of just vote all together and get them out of our docket. So would somebody like to move the consent agenda with those three items in it, please?
Maggie Sharon.
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda, those three items? Very good then, roll call, vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Great. Now for the minutes. So the truth, so some people believe that you can only vote on the minutes if you are present at the meeting. We've been told that is not the case, although generally when we, when we don't have to, we we usually abstain from voting on a vote of the minutes if we were not at the meeting. There are some times in which you have to vote in the minutes, even if you are at the meeting, because it's possible that it's a set of minutes in which nobody currently in the school committee has been there. One example is executive sessions, when we have to go back 10 or 20 or 30 years on executive sessions and vote to make parts of it public. So in this case, however, if you are, if you feel uncomfortable voting on the minutes to approve the minutes when you weren't there, you can certainly abstain from it. So we're going to take these four sets of minutes. I believe that there are some minor changes on them. So you read the four sets of minutes. I don't think there are any substantive changes, but I believe that, Julia, tell me if I'm wrong, or Charlene, there are some minor changes to some of the minutes. Let's take December 12th. So would somebody like to so why don't you share with us what they, what, if any changes there were for the December 12th minutes, and then I'll I'll state the motion in a way that'll expedite matters. So were there changes to the minutes of December 12th? Julia or Charlene, I know that Alice threw a few in. Pam.
I do. I know the signature lines needs to be added to that.
It needs a signature line. I also believe that Pam was not chair at that point.
That's right. I was not chair.
So I'm going to, I would like somebody to move the minutes of December 12th to add back the signature line and to eliminate the designation of chair for Pam on those minutes. I believe those were the changes.
So moved.
And second, any further discussion on the minutes of December 12th? Very good. Roll call, vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Okay, were there any suggested changes on the minutes of February 28th? Pam.
I was no longer chair.
It also says you for chair on February 28th? Yeah.
Yes.
And I believe there was no signature line on those as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would be again to remove Pam as designation of chair to add a signature line. Were there any other comments in those minutes? Well, then, so the motion is to approve the minutes of February 28th, removing Pam as chair in the minutes and adding the signature line. Could I have a motion moved and a second, please?
Second.
Further discussion in these minutes? Very well then, roll call, vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Very good. The minutes of March 7th. Pam.
I'm so happy to have you as chair during these minutes. I was not chair.
Okay, once again, Pam was not chair and I believe we need a signature line.
That is correct.
Are there any other changes we need for the minutes of March 7th? Very well then, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th with adding a signature line and removing Pam as chair?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Roll call, vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Finally, the minutes of September 10th. Are there any changes we need to make in those minutes? I do believe we need a signature line.
That's better.
And it's 2024.
And 2000, and it should be 2024.
2024, not 23.
And, and I am not chair.
Right. So Pam is not chair 2024, and we need a signature line. And Charlene, do you have another one?
Nope, that was it.
Very good. So again, I would vote, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2024, with said changes made to it.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Roll call. Any other further discussion or change? No. Roll call, vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigoo Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Very good. That concludes the minutes and all the items on the consent agenda. Chairs report. Does anybody have an item for the good of the organization? And for Linda, the good of the organization means any item which is of general news interest under positive light for Minuteman members in their community or things that they know about or they've seen. So tonight, are there any particular items for the good of the organization? Well, the next one is actually for the good of the organization, we'll do that separate. Nothing, so we'll move on and we'll say hello once again now in a full, regular school committee meeting to Linda Herbison, and we're very happy that you've joined us from Bolton.
Thank you.
At the same time, I'd like to say thank you once again to Erica Elsie for all the really superlative work that she did to this, to this committee, and she had quite an eagle eye in things. And she knows, she knows Linda, and Linda has come very highly recommended for America, which is all the vote of confidence that I need. Very good. Very exciting subject, subcommittee goals, item 5D. So generally what we do at the, towards the beginning of the school year is that all the subcommittees meet, and they come up with their primary goals for the year. Let's say three of them. So I would like is for all the subcommittees to meet to develop and vote on what they think is their most important goals for the year, keeping in mind, of course, also the full school committee goals. And I would like you to submit them to Julia prior to October 29th, so the officers can take a look at these at the officers' meeting and, and present the full list to the full school committee on our next meeting. So all the subcommittees should meet, discuss goals. You don't have to be, you know, go out in left field on that. If you'll excuse me, I'm going to have to take this. Alice, could you please take over for me?
Yes, so Jeff was just asking that everybody meet and submit their subcommittee goals, so let's agree to submit those to Julia. Do, does anybody have an idea of a good date, maybe before the next school committee meeting, before the next officers' meeting? Maybe Julia can identify when that is and let the school committee know that they need to submit the subcommittee goals. Does that work? Okay, so the next thing is, let me see, we have the principal's report.
Oh, I'm muting myself. First and foremost, I want to introduce our two student representatives that will be attending our school committee meetings and giving you updates. Today's more of an introduction so that you get to know them, and then they will be doing presentations at each meeting that we have coming up. So at first, I'd like to introduce Riley Trusdale. I'm gonna let her talk a little bit about herself. She's a senior, but she's repeating her duty from last year, is my understanding, as being a rep from last year. So I'm gonna let Riley kind of introduce herself, and then we'll go into our junior rep.
Hi, everyone. My name's Riley. I'm super excited to be back with you guys this year as one of the student reps. I'm currently a senior in veterinary science, and I've also been out on co-op since February, working at a local vet clinic. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to this year and being able to keep you guys updated with class events and other stuff going on through the school.
And Riley comes from us, from Waltham, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And then as our junior rep, we have Matilda Trudell. Gonna let her introduce herself. I think you're mute, not muted. Something's going on with the audio. Not yet.
What about now?
Ah, you got it.
There we go. My phone and my computer were not agreeing. Hi, I am Matilda Trudell. I'm a junior in early education and teaching. This will be my first year as a student rep, and I'm very excited to keep you updated on the students' point of view at Minuteman. And yeah.
And Matilda, if I'm correct, you come from Arlington?
Yes.
So as you know, our reps are very invested in school. They're also part of our school council, as well as they are heads of, well, in their student government, they're the presidents, I think, if I'm correct, of your classes as well. So they're gonna give plenty of updates every time that we meet. So welcome to our student reps and thank you for coming tonight. So now for all the fun stuff. I'm just asking if I can share. Yes. Ah, there we go. We're getting there. So just want to get to, here we go. So today's leadership report, we're gonna talk about, I'm gonna bring up a couple of things regarding our MCAS stuff, as well as our state matrix stuff, our chronic absenteeism, and we're gonna review a little bit about where we are for enrollment as of October 1st and where we are for admissions October 1st. I have October 1st numbers, but I also have where we are as of today. So to start off, we'd like to talk a little bit about our student growth. Now, if you look at this chart here, we're comparing last year's growth to this year's growth. And when we're talking about growth, we're, we're looking at a cohort of students in the same percentile range and how they're doing from year to year. And if you're looking where Minuteman is, if we look at last year's growth, which is 2024, a lot of our students in ELA, and we're talking to each student group as well, are in the high-growth range. So if you're looking at all students, between 60 and 79%, you know, in 2023, we're at 65.4. And then in 2024, we went up to 66.1. We'll talk a little bit about lowest performing, because if you notice, there's only one value there. And I will definitely go through that a little bit, especially when we're talking about chronic absenteeism and the state matrix. Even our high needs, we're up 6%. And again, low income, 62.1, 66.3 with students with disabilities. Again, if you see that there's a value with Hispanic and Latino, the reason why it's reported in 2024 is that our number in 2023 of number of students wasn't great enough to have a report. But in 2024, we did. So that's why we have that value there. And then, as you can see in our white subgroup there, or our student group, also moving up by percentage point from 65 to 67. So in ELA, our growth is doing quite well. And we talked a little bit about math. As you can see, we've, we're still in typical growth, which is a good thing, but we have some drops compared from 2023 to 2024. As you know, we're probably down about five percentage points for all students. And again, the lowest performing is being reported. 2023 didn't have that. I'll explain that a little bit later. If you look at our high needs, we're pretty much right on point. Low income has gone down, but our students with disabilities has gone up, almost to high growth, which is a good achievement. And again, our students, sorry, people are blocking my chart on Zoom, so I just gotta go a little bit. 57.2, but down to 52.1. So again, we look at these things and we, this is the data that we look at and we, we work together as teams to kind of figure out, okay, what, what's going on? But remember, everything is based off last year, so we want to move forward to this year. So we kind of come up with game plans. We have certain meetings to kind of discuss how we're gonna close those gaps as we move forward. And you won't see one for science due to the fact that achievement in science only happens in three grades throughout their whole career, third, eighth, and ninth. And here at Minuteman, we do it at 10th. But for growth, we need each year that goes through from a student's start to finish. And therefore, that's why you have math and ELA, but you won't see any for science. So this chart is actually very makes me very happy to see. Talking about chronic absenteeism, and with chronic absenteeism, you know, it is the belief that when students are in school, we show better achievement. And through the years, from 2022 to 2024, you want your chronic absenteeism, absenteeism numbers to go down. So you don't want to see a greater number going up. We actually want to see the percentage going down. So if you look at all students in 2022, it was reported in state that we were at 16.7%. Then in 2023, 12.9, and then as of last year, 10.5. And my hope is that as my term as principal, that that number continues to go down into a smaller amount. So again, with our groups, if you look at what's there, we have high needs, low income, again, Hispanic, Latino, which is now being reported, and students with disability. All those numbers have gone down through the years. So even within the student groups, we don't have a number that is going in reverse and that's going up. So we want to kind of keep going down through this trend as we're moving forward. So these numbers are very promising. I'm very excited for these numbers. And again, my hope is that they continue to go in the correct direction. I think we do a good job of making sure we're watching attendance. And as a sort of meeting that we've been having on Mondays, we sort of do an overview, a leadership student support team, not just a regular student support team, where we're reviewing these numbers and we're making plans on how we can support students to improve their attendance if it's trending in a way that we think needs assistance. So let's move over to the state matrix. Our state matrix is determined by factors, and this is what goes across the state. And we're looking at things like achievement, growth, high school completion, our, our English language learners proficiency in English, as well as some additional indicators. And if you're looking at this chart of the progress towards improvement targets, you'll see how many points we earn over how many possible points. And then we get a percentage out of each one of those. So the key here to know is that the state compares all students, like I showed you before, but then also grabs lowest performing students, which is usually the 20% on the low side based off of data that they've attained before. And so when you look at this chart, believe it or not, what happens is 50% of our data comes from all students, and then 50% also comes from lowest performing. So it gets detailed. We look at the detailed part of this to kind of see where's our high points and where's our low points. The other factor that you have to realize too is if you look on the bottom here, the 2023 to 2024, to get our cumulative improvement percentage, we take 2023's data, which was 89%, and we take 40% of that, and that's how the state kind of calculates that out. And then in 2024, where our number was at 56, if you look in the chart on the left, they take 60% of that. So the way I always explain this is it's the pi always has to equal 100%. So with all of these factors, achievement, growth, school completion, achieving, attaining English proficiency, and our additional indicators, all of those pieces have to equal out to 100%. And then, when you have the 50 and the 50%, right, we gotta put that together and make that 100%. So there you also end up with your 40 from last year and 60. Now, I was gonna mention this before, as I said before, lowest proficiency. Lowest proficiency was not calculated after the pandemic because the state really wanted to make sure that there was an equity was being figured out, especially when it comes to attendance, things of that nature, how we were learning on Zoom. So the state had determined that we were not going to use lowest performing data until now. So now the 2024 basically uses that data, that lowest performing data that wasn't used before. So what does that mean? If you look at the 89% that was there, that was without our lowest performing students. Now with our 56%, that kind of includes that group. So when we're looking at these two things, the things that we care about are our progress towards the targets, and that's the number percentage that we compare against ourselves to see how we're doing. The other important one is the percentile ranking. And if I go back, that's 74, that's up on the right, that's our percentile ranking, and that's comparing schools across the state. So we look at schools across the state, we're in the 74th percentile of all the schools across the state. So we're, we're judging ourselves, right, comparison against other nine through 12. So what I did here in this graph here is I compared our school to other regional tech schools. Now, remember, this slide here is really performance against each other's school. So there's no, even though we've, I have Assabette, Blackstone, Greater Lawrence and all that, these are the numbers that they're comparing against themselves. I just thought it'd be good for us to see what's there. I think the common theme here that you can see is that in 2024, everybody is sort of down because that lowest performing student is now factored in to the calculations in the state matrix that's there. So that's performance against ourselves. But then, when you look at comparative, and this, I think this graph kind of expresses it more, we're now looking at other schools that we are compared to, right? So for example, if you look at Minuteman and you look at Shawshine way to the right, we have a similar 2024 percentile. Last year, without the lowest performing students, we have an 89 percentile and a 77 percentile that's there. So again, the factor that's here is that everybody has a step down, except, which is interesting, Greater Lowell has moved up. So they've moved up in their percentile ranking. Still not comparative to where we are, which is 74, but I think with their lowest performing, they were able to hit some, some targets that got them to where they are. I think one good school to, that was listed there to compare to is Blackstone. You know, we always, you know, Minuteman, we're trying to strive to be the best that we can. So we look to see how other schools are doing. We don't want to stay static and say, well, okay, we're, we're at the top. We, we are. We're one of the top regional schools, but we don't want to stay static. We want to kind of stay there. And as I keep saying to everyone, we want to keep Minuteman moving forward. So what do we do in order to do this? And this is data, again, that we look at at teams and try to figure out what targets do we need to hit when we're dealing with certain things? So again, the state usually takes data at October 1st. Actually, they don't usually. They actually do take October 1st. So what I did here was I did a small comparison of where our enrollment is from last year to this year, up at, at this time. So when I looked at the data from last year, we had a total of 683 students that were attending Minuteman. You have an increase by one student in ninth grade for this year. We have a dip in the 10th grade that's there from last year compared to this year. The 11th grade, we're trying to see what that is because that's something that has popped up and we're trying to figure these things out of what possibly happened.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'd like to interrupt for a second just to clarify this slide. It's important to note that the 11th grade from last year had 180 students, and those are now 12th graders. So even though it looks like we lost a billion kids in the 11th grade, we did not. It, it's four. So when you're looking year to year, you have to remember students get promoted. So you're comparing the 180 to the 76 year. So I had trouble with that when I looked at this, so I just wanted to make sure I shared that with everyone because when you look at a bar, you automatically compare the two bars next to each other. But we're actually looking, we have to remember to follow the class year of graduation. Thank you, Paul.
Yep, no problem. And agreeing with Heidi. So if you're looking at that 180, that blue that's there in the 11th grade, and you move over to the 12th grade, you'd be looking at the yellow that's there because that's where that cohort moved into the next the next year. So, yeah, exactly, you know, and and hearing Heidi say this, when I'm looking at the slide, I probably should have done it by year of graduation. By year of graduation, it probably would have looked more um following the cohort, we would have seen it a little bit better instead of comparing from year to year, uh, which makes this dip look there uh greater in the eleventh grade. I mean, like I said, uh, if you look at the twelfth grade, moving forward, you know, if you have one sixty-two and then next year, we now have our one eighty now at one seventy-six, it looks like we shot right up. So uh, next time I will definitely do more of a yearly cohort uh to follow that. And then kind of my last slide, um, is a little bit of talking about our, our admissions applications at this point in time. So I want to uh make it clear that we just started doing presentations to um other schools within our region. Uh, the middle schools, we've had our student ambassadors go with our director of admissions. And um, we've seen that based off of last year, again, at October first, we had eleven applications. This year, we've had twenty-nine. So the admissions part and I think the enrollment part have something to do back and forth. But if you look to the right, I did get an update as of this, this afternoon. And as of October fifteenth, as of today, we actually have forty-seven completed applications and we have twenty-four students that started their applications, haven't finished it yet. So, I mean, one of the dates that we tend to look for is October twenty-seventh because a lot of our presentations are completed. But then in November, I think it's very important because we haven't had our showcase day, we haven't had our open house. So we, we're, you know, anticipating that our numbers are going to get greater as we move through the months. But I think as a promising start, that we've only done a few presentations and we've seen an increase of um application completions um through last year compared to this year as of October first. And then finally, what, what are we going to do next, right? So looking at our data, you know, I meet with the director of admissions once a week. And really and truly, we got to look at things of which direction we're going with, again, how many applications. And then seeing how many students are actually enrolled. And that's a um, a director of admissions to guidance piece too, because I also want to figure out, you know, that a drop off, what is that happening? Are we doing exit interviews? Are we trying to figure out? Why is someone leaving Minuteman? How do we keep them retained? How do we have waiting lists through each grade um so that more people come to Minuteman? Because I think that's speaks volumes to the school that's, I, I think is a magical place and how we can continue to have um, you know, increased enrollment as we move through the years. And then the, the last piece is always attendance and engagement. I think the two go hand in hand. And like I said, we have our, our leadership uh support team meetings every Monday, uh, where we're reviewing attendance and there's different administrators at the table um discussing things. So we have plans that go through that. And engagement is really, um, I've said it to everybody, when the student's here, it's not just that they're missing work, it's making those connections. And I think when students make connections with people, uh, the two and two go hand in hand. So that is really it for my report. I'm going to stop sharing and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Uh, Jeff has returned. He is now the chair again.
Any questions, school committee members? That was a very extensive, interesting report. A lot to think about, a lot of data for the school to work on. Uh, which you wouldn't have, of course, if we didn't. Anyway, uh, any comments or questions? Yeah, Sharon.
So just in looking, I know that Heidi, you mentioned we needed to look at the different columns and that one about um student enrollment numbers, but I am curious, it does look, even with looking at the correct columns that last year's sophomores are now like twelve, was the, was the largest drop was twelve students. And I'm just wondering if we're taking any look into like, were they all from a particular um career path, or if it was just random twelve students? I just wonder if that's has any impact on it?
Uh, I can answer that. So that's why we have to actually have formal exit interviews. Because with such tiny numbers, when you look at percentages, if five kids move out of state, we, we can't just look at shops. So um, we don't have a formal process for that at this point, but that's something we're looking into. Thank you, Sharon.
Thanks.
So I really appreciate you presenting um all these statistics. Um, it's really helpful to hear that. I, I was having a little trouble with the, what was it? The state status one? And I understand what you're saying about why the the numbers are different year, you're, you know, bringing in different factors. What I was trying to get out of that slide and I couldn't was, what is it telling us about? You know, are there particular priorities to be focusing on?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I guess I could get a little bit in depth. I mean, we look at our student groups. Um, so we look at things that we can target. And we get targets from the state based on, on March to see what's the percentage that they feel that we should move up on. Um, usually it's about a couple of percentage points of improvement in each factor. And one of the things on that report that isn't shown is that we can do a detailed uh report and we can hit each piece and each um, not subgroup, I'm sorry, student group of each part that was there. So when I showed you achievement, we can see all students, we can see students with disabilities, we can see all of that. And then when we do growth, the same thing. And then high school graduation, we do the same thing. So we're really trying to target those student groups because I think that filters into all the students that are there.
So Pam, I, I think I, I a little, you're saying, is this good? Did we do well or did we not? What does this look like for Minuteman? Um, so what we have right now is our growth rates. That means kids getting better at their own skills are spectacular. Um, typical growth is where people strive to be. We are in typical growth and beyond. So that's excellent. All of those little factors, um, all of the different elements of accountability, we really have to be careful as a district when we're looking at them because again, if you're looking at a group of twenty students and two kids shift, that's different than looking at a group of one hundred students. Typically, schools can't use those targets that the state sets because it doesn't matter. We just have to do the very best we can for every single child um when it comes to achievement and engagement. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that's why um Principal Deliva's last slide showed what we can control. Engagement and attendance, those are our key areas.
Yep.
Uh, and, and that's what we can control and, and where we're focusing on right now.
Linda.
Um, I had a young friend three or four years ago who was at Minuteman and went into chronic depression. And so his attendance, he was one of those really poor attenders because he just couldn't get out of bed. What do we do to keep those kids in the loop to um get them to come to school in a less stressful environment?
So I can answer that. So if you are somebody who is chronically, if you have um a medical condition, those kids who are out for fourteen days or more, um, we need to provide tutoring. That's a whole separate thing. And those kids are not counted. Um, if they're on an alternative placement for support, that doesn't necessarily count towards this. We can also file an appeal for a particular student to be excluded if we needed to. Um, but what we look at on, on the school level is patterns. So, big picture patterns, yep.
Good.
Sharon.
So I, I agree with what you said, Heidi, that we were, you know, typical growth or high growth um, on both of those charts that Paul showed. I guess if I read it correctly and correct me if I'm wrong, please, it looked like our students were going up for the most part in like higher into high growth on the ELA, but that across the board, it looked like math sort of dropped from high growth or higher in the typical growth to lower in the typical growth. Is that accurate or did I misread that?
So if it is within two and a half percentage points or so, that's not sta- statistically significant that we would have a red alert or anything like that. Um, our, if we are in that band, the achievement is relatively the same. To get to high growth is a huge achievement. Um, so I hope that we'll continue to go in that direction because uh that does show where kids have been in math and English. I do want to add that we won't have that for science because science is an end of course exam and it is not an achievement test like math and English are.
And if I, if I read this, the um, the state matrix one correctly, it looked like we didn't gain uh all of the possible points in the science department as well. Is that accurate?
So on the accountability report, there's several areas where we didn't gain all of the points. If you would like a deep dive into what that rubric is, I'm happy to do. We actually had to do a huge PD on that this summer because it's pretty complicated. I'm happy to do that with anybody um, uh, another time. We can check out the state rubric.
And that, and I'm not, I mean, I do know that, like I said, we were in the, in the typical growth. I was just curious if there was something why our, I mean, our our ELAs are quite impressive in that higher growth. I was just curious if there was anything different among the reading and, I mean, the math and the science that was not having them be as high.
So we don't have growth for science. That, that's not, that's, doesn't exist. Um, but for math, they're at the top of the typical growth. That's just a report where we are right now. Um, math's job and English's job is to keep pushing every kid forward. Um, growth is based on individual students each year, so each group is a different group. Um, and that's where we are.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Any other comments? I'll just add one. The thing that I'll, uh, was most um uh, good for me was the drop in chronic absenteeism, which is a scourge that many, many schools are facing. And it's probably one of the most important reasons for low achieving students to be low achieving. And that was a pretty impressive drop that I saw. So I just wanted to, to point that out. That's the thing that caught my, caught my eye the most. Uh, so it seems that there are no other questions for this. Thank you for that very uh complete report, very interesting. There's a lot of thought. I'm sure that you're going to be given to those results moving up. And I believe that's the end of the principal's report. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Moving to the superintendent's report, Heidi Driscoll.
Thank you. Um, so I would, if it, it pleases the committee, we can start with the review of the goals. Um, it looks like on the agenda, we do have a vote for that. You have already received the goals. Um, I didn't receive questions about them last time. If you would like me to share my screen and review them with you, I can. If I'm not mistaken, you were shared with them, they were shared with you in the packet. Um, how would you like me to proceed, Jeff?
I think that you should uh just remind the, so that, the, the packet we got had a lot of information in it. But the only part that we're voting on is the goals. So just review the portion of it that includes the goals, which we discussed last time. And I think that we're going to be ready to vote on it really quick.
Okay, um, Julia, may I share my screen, please? Julia? Julia, would you mind closing this? I need to share my screen. This is my entry. But there we go. Perfect. So I am, Julia is trying to save me because I am in a, um, for the first time, I am not in my office. Um, zooming, I'm zooming somewhere else. Okay, so my overarching goal was to renew a sense of community founded in trust, professional professionalism and transparent communication. And my three goals, which we have, which you've received in depth, are effective entry and direction setting, my entry plan, maintaining momentum during the transition, conducting evaluations, continuing the business of the district, and the new superintendent induction program. Those are my three goals. Uh, and that, that is all we have in there.
Hey, now, in your report, you have the, uh, you have the, like, the written version of them.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we want to see because that's what we're going to vote on.
Okay.
So just a reminder, the uh, the superintendent proposes goals, the school, the school committee votes to accept them, and those become the basis of her evaluation at the end of the year. She has chosen three goals. We went over these in fair detail last meeting. There are not extensive questions or controversy on these three goals, but as usual, we think about it for a while. We come back before we vote. To receive the three goals, there's a paper version of them written out in clear English uh, with key actions and benchmarks that we've seen twice so far. So would some member like to uh make a motion to accept the subcommittee, the uh superintendent's goal for the current school year?
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Oh, both.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and here we're going to see them in big style. So these are the ones that we're interested in. Goal one, which she mentioned with some details, goal two. And just below that, goal three. We all had to, saw this last month and we were sent it um this month as well. So are any further comments, questions on the superintendent's goals before we bring this to a vote? Very well then, roll call vote.
Hamner Saktin, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
We're missing.
Sharon, Sharon lost her internet.
Okay, then we will go to, hopefully she'll find it. Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Now, Slukastow, yes.
Okay. The old internet. Okay, it comes and it goes. It give us and it take us away. Uh, hopefully she'll be trying to come back in. Julia, I hope she's trying to come back in. Uh, in the meantime, entry plan, entry plan update, Heidi Driscoll.
Okay, Julia, would you mind sharing that now, the entry plan update?
Certainly.
Thank you. So just as a backup, I'm going to log in from a second location. Great. Thank you, Julia. So for my leadership report tonight, it is a brief update on my entry plan. Um, you can skip to slide two. So the stages of my entry plan, as you know, um, from what I've previously shared, it's planning and preparation, information and data gathering, which is where I am right now, and then we'll move on to processing information. So I just want to give you a little insight into the information gathering. The three things I'm going to share with you today are the big things that have come up, um, which is our data review, um, steps to enhance communication, and the new superintendent induction program. Next slide. So during this data review, um, there's lots of information that I'm going through with our team and our new data person and our technology director has had a more than um their fair share of work. So this is one example of something that um is available on the public D E C website is Minuteman's profile. And if you look all the way to the right, it shows the number of students we have in co- And if you look all the way to the right, it shows the number of students we have in co-op according to the Department of Ed by the end of the year of 2024. So I know from talking to all of you and talking to everyone at Minuteman, that zero is, is not the correct number. Um, long story short, as our data person looked into this information, um, we actually have zeros according to the Department of Education all the way back until 2018. We have to fix that. That's our fault. It's in our student information system incorrectly. Um, flip to the next slide, and this is one tiny piece of all the data we're going through. So what we have right now, I showed you the co-op numbers. This is for a, a slew of um, comparable um, vocational school districts. But if you look at the bright yellow, this is what we have for Minuteman. We don't have the information up until 2022, 2023 and 2024, but we didn't mark it in the student information system. So that is something that is already fixed um, for next year or for this year's report. And um, the data, thankfully, our co-op coordinator has information. She logs it herself. But that's one bit of information that we need to clean up in our student information system so that when you see things like our state matrix that um, we're judged on, all of those co-op students would count as advanced coursework. That wasn't included in our data because we didn't have them marked correctly. So a lot of the things we're doing now is just cleaning house, making sure we're working smarter, not harder. And again, that's one tiny piece of information. Um, next slide, please. Uh, uh, some things that I've been doing to enhance communication is uh, monthly administrative assistant check-ins. As you know, administrative assistants at, as a group know everything that goes on everywhere in our building. Um, so we're working together to make sure we're pushing out um, communication um, in a consistent manner. We're talking about how to consolidate some of the things we do so we're not um, duplicating efforts. And the first meeting we had is great. I think the next one we have is tomorrow. Uh, we have monthly E-Team meetings and they're focused on action items. Um, separately, I meet with E-Team members um, on their own action items that we track together. And on top of that, um, I have had check-ins with our leads um, across the district and um, I'm planning for shadow days. So instead of just going into um, classrooms to observe and see things without context, I'm actually spending a day with a lead and they're bringing me to every classroom. They're showing me whatever they think is urgent for me to know and learn about their department. Um, and they were, they were great um, when we met and they're excited to share. And then the last slide I have is um, NISIP. Um, so they are pushing us forward through our entry plans, making sure that we are continuously working on um, the elements of the superintendency. Um, my favorite part of here um, was our team building scenario that we did in person. We did one of those if you're on an island and you only have these things, you had to decide as a team what we saved. That little tiny thing is the trophy our team received, obviously thrilled to be on the little winning team there. So I wanted to flash that on the screen. And the last item is politics and the superintendency. Something that they are pushing um, for us to do is to make sure that we are visible in our communities, that our school district as a we is visible. So something you will be receiving from me is a Google form that our admissions director made because we would love information from all of you about what are those community events that everybody loves, that everybody goes to, that everybody talks about? So we can make sure Minuteman has a visible presence and is represented at those things in all of our communities. Um, so that's been the most helpful, I would say. Um, all right, Julia, you can close that up and I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, yes, Linda.
What's an E-Team?
I'm an executive team.
Okay, thank you.
Central.
Other questions and comments?
Well, and as always, if any of you have questions later that you think of as you're processing the information about any of this, you're obviously welcome to reach out to me individually um, as you see fit.
I think the reason you're not getting a lot of questions is not because they're uninterested, but because your report was pretty clear.
Thank you. I'm trying.
Sensible. So that's the reason why I think that people are silent, just common sense, well presented, simple thing to read. Is that correct, folks? Because I see a lot of nodding.
Thank you very much. Thank, I appreciate it.
Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
It does, Jeff.
That's good because hold on, school committee members, especially those of you who like numbers. We have a very exciting FinCom report today. So just get out your pencils and your brilliant beanies. And Steve has a lot to share with us and Nikki, Stephen, Nikki have a lot to share with us. Finance report, Steve Ledoux.
Fun with numbers. So uh, the finance committee has met since the last meeting. We met on uh, September 16th, October 7th, and just prior to this meeting tonight to uh, make a recommendation on the uh, uh, recommended appropriation on, from the capital stabilization. So uh, you know, in addition to uh, we're now entering budget season, um, most of what we reviewed at finance committee um, uh, includes uh, what, what's on the agenda tonight, the um, basically quarterly reports. So before we talk about the stabilization fund in the north building, um, I'd like to ask Nikki just to run through those quarterlies real quickly.
Absolutely.
Uh, before Nikki does so, let me just um, uh, make a comment. If there are uh, school committee members who would like to understand these reports a little bit better, some of us have been here for a number of years and we used to sing them, then it would be possible for us to hold a uh, a seminar. I'm sure that Nikki would be thrilled to give a seminar and go over these reports in, in depth with school committee members. So if that is something that you'd like after today's presentation, then why don't you uh, uh, send a request to Julia and if we can get a few school committees interested, I would ask Nikki to hold a, a presentation and go over them in, in more detail.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we did something like that maybe a couple of years ago during, I think, part of our goal setting, our strategic planning. So that'd be a good idea.
Correct. So just let us know if you're interested in that and nobody, not everybody has to attend. So if you're, if you're comfortable with them, you don't have to attend. If you'd like to know a little bit more, it may be a, a, a good idea. So that, I just wanted to make that comment. I didn't want to delay you, Nikki, in your.
Not a problem. I would be happy to if anyone is, is um, more interested in these very riveting reports. So I will start off with our general fund report. Um, for those of you who are new or haven't seen this report before, this is the budget that the school committee votes on. Um, these are the function codes which we report out to DESI on our end of the year report. That's required by the state. So the budget columns, um, for anyone that hasn't seen this report is our initial budget. Some of any budget adjustments, any budget adjustments that we do are brought to you quarterly and anything over $10,000 needs to be approved by the school committee. Um, then we have our final budget, our year-to-date expenses and the sum of our ending balance. So this is actually the final report for our June 30th, our FY 24 year end, um, and our audit is starting this week. So just um, an update is that all of these lines um, look really great. None were in a deficit and we ended the year um, with $436,577, which is about one and a half percent of our budget. Um, you'll see here our initial budget plus the transfer that we did at year end, which we transferred some additional funding into the capital stabilization as well as our OPAB fund. And um, we were able to pay off some of our, our debt for the MSBA project before the final closing. So all in all, this report um, looks very good and I just wanted to quickly update the committee as to where we're at and what we are presenting to um, the audited. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, we could move on to the next revolving report. Would that be appropriate, Steve?
Yes.
Our next report are, are revolving funds. And for those of you that aren't familiar with our revolving funds, um, the beginning balance plus any revenue and expenses is your ending balance. And why we call them revolving funds is that ending balance revolves and becomes your beginning balance. So any money that you put into that fund continues um, year in after year um, and continues to revolve. So hence the, the very clever name. Um, our first fund is our, our community ed. We run our summer school program here. And you'll see that this balance is um, doing really well. We've been very fortunate to have um, quite a few summer school grants that's helped offset some of the costs. Um, a lot of our revenue gets uh, received before summer school starts in June 30th and then they'll spend their expenses. So um, over July and August. So you'll see in our next report in September 30th, this expenses for summer school. Our MTI program is our next fund, Fund 16. Um, overall, this program just about broke even um, with revenues of about $277,000 from all of the different um, classes that um, the post um, the post-secondary classes for our adult learners and our expenses. Um, so we are continuing to keep an eye on this um, revolving fund and we've created a budget and monthly check-ins with the director, um, Nancy Hool, to ensure that all of our classes uh, for this program continue to run um, and put us in a good uh, financial position. It's important to note too that um, not only do we run these adult education classes, which are tuition-based, but we also offer um, to tuition-free classes through our CTI grants and those help offset some of the salary costs of our administrative support. Um, probably the most interesting line um, for the school committee is our facility rental line. Um, one I'll highlight here um, is our athletic fields, Department 409 here. Um, and then our field reserve and our facility debt reserve. So part of our budget was that we um, made a promise to the towns through our budget that um, we will be funding the debt for our athletic field, which was $113,000. And we've also started to contribute to an athletic field reserve. So we will continue to put away $237,600 each year. And when it's time to replace the turf or any upgraded needed to the athletic field, we'll be able to fund it out of that reserve account. Our Fund 14 are all our different trades accounts. So um, any of the programs um, that do work um, will receive revenue and um, expenses. So our first line, for example, is auto. Here, um, they work on cars and they charge their customers. And then any of the expenses are the supplies that they need to fix the cars. Um, some highlights are our child um, development, our CCA program, which is the preschool rerun, um, as well as our bakery and restaurant. Our Fund 17 is our capital fee. That fee is the revenue that we received for many out-of-district students. Um, that fee helps offset the capital costs that we charge to our member towns. And our out-of-district tuition is the tuition, which is set by the state um, that we charge any students um, to come to Minuteman that are out of district. Last but not least is our food service account. Um, and that program is run by FreshPix, um, which was bought over by a company named Whitsons. Um, and this revolving fund is in great shape um, overall, and the students have been happy with the food. Um, that is a summary of this report and I'm happy to answer any questions um, that, that anyone has.
Uh, Pam.
Hi, thanks very much and thanks for these reports. I was um, you know, it's great to see that number for the facility rental. I'm just curious, I don't remember what we were anticipating and how does this um, line up with um, you know, what we, what we had been anticipating? Is it over? Is it about the same?
Yeah, I would say that um, overall, looking back at some old reports, they estimated to be around 400 uh, to 500,000 for the athletic fields. Um, the revenue we received just for the athletic fields is 395. Um, the expenses to this line is there is um, one light on the athletic field. Um, so we charge that to any of our rentals too, to offset those costs. Um, and then the transfer out. So I'd say overall, it's in line with what we expect in. I'd say um, just for the athletic fields, another highlight is, you know, our facilities' general rentals were about 400,000. Um, so that's a really great highlight. Um, that's the theater, any of the classrooms, um, the Paul Revere room, the gym. Um, so I'd say that um, those rentals um, exceeded expectations um, and that the athletic fields met our expectations.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Well, the chair has a quick uh, a comment that these are excellent reports. And through my years here, we didn't always have excellent reports. But these are especially in the um, uh, the revolving accounts. So I used to call them the revolting accounts because they were a cause of a lot of um, uh, problems, tourists. But right now, this is a, this is a great report and then we should all be happy to see it. Right. And Pam has another comment, question.
I do. Sorry about that. I'm trying to wrap my head around why food service would have a balance at the end. So instead of just coming out even.
Absolutely. Um, so our food service program, I'd say part of the reason we're seeing um, additional revenue is that all the students eat free currently. Um, so because they're able to eat free, we actually get, um, we report that number out and we receive those funds from the state versus them come, you know, coming from out of pocket from the students. So I'd say because of that, you have more students that will get the free lunch and that we can get reimbursed for. Um, part of FreshPix coming in as well was um, that they would come in and they actually do like an estimate, an estimate of the revenue and expense. So we do expect to see a small profit. Um, but I would say because of the, the free lunch, that is the um, the kicker um, probably the most as to why we're receiving that. We also have a grant, um, supply chain assistance, which we're able to offset um, some foods that typically we would be paying FreshPix for. So it's items like whole milk, cheese, tomatoes, lettuce. Um, those grants will be ending this year, which um, we probably won't see as much of a margin of, of profit in that line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions and comments on this report? Very well, move on.
Great. This is our student activity report um, recommended from the auditors to report quarterly out um, for transparency purposes to the school committee as well as the advisors. Um, this report is very similar to all of our other reports with a beginning balance. Any of the revenue collected throughout the year and expenditures, um, you will see at year end, uh, the senior class decided to donate back to all of the um, classes upcoming, um, a percentage of what they had left over. So those are the transfer in and transfer out. Uh, overall, these balances are really great. There is none in the deficit. Um, and happy to answer any questions that um, anyone will have.
See no hands, so move right along. Oh, Alice has her hand up. Good, Alice.
I just want to uh, reiterate some, what Jeff said about the other accounts. This is also really great to see, even though they're small numbers, it's very, very important to have this kind of detail on these. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, you know, and as we've talked about, um, this is the student activities. So this is the, the money that the students actually fundraise. Um, we really do keep a, a very close eye on these accounts. Um, any withdrawal from the account Any withdrawal from the account requires three student signatures, as well as a sign-off from the principal and the business office. It also goes to the finance committee, as any other warrants do for their approval. So these have a little extra scrutiny, and we do have those additional audits that keep a very close eye on these accounts.
Since there's a lot of little cash things here, it is a, an area in which some people have unfortunately, in some schools, taken advantage of this in an appropriate manner, hence the extra scrutiny. Sharon?
So silly question, are these funds things, like when they're doing their fundraising, are these funds that they can use for like, like I'm thinking the cheerleaders? I know there was talk among some parents in the years past about how they didn't have matching uniforms. Is this like a fund that they could use when they do their fundraising for uniforms? Or what is, what are these funds used for among these clubs?
Absolutely. I am happy to report at the end of last year, we were able to purchase uniforms for any of the sports teams that did not have uniforms or needed additional due to the number, the increase in interest for the sport. So cheerleading does have matching uniforms. So they could certainly be used for uniforms. I don't think that is a need anymore. But it's whatever the students, you know, determine, as long as it's agreed upon. So, you know, it would be for the purpose, some people order, you know, scrimmage pennies for basketball or some new basketballs or warmups, you know, it's, it's at the students discretion because the students fundraise the money. We're just essentially like the holders of the money.
See, no more hands, so next report, please.
Our next report is our bank balance report. This report actually comes straight from our treasurer, Lori Elliott. Happy to report that all of our bank balances reconciled to the general ledger. And this list is the preferred report of the finance committee and the school committee, giving the balances and the interest earned of all of our accounts. Happy to answer any questions on this report.
Just as a historic note, at one point, we had many, many more of these bank accounts. And it took us a few years of oversight and treasurers and our business manager looking at them to consolidate them into the number of accounts that we have now. And the number of accounts we have now, they make perfect sense. And it is probably the right number of accounts, which was not, not so in the past. They're pretty easy to understand. Any questions on the accounts, Alice?
There's a number of banks too, as I recall.
We do have different banks. Our main bank, I would say, is Eastern Bank. We have a depository account where all of our deposits go into. And then we have a payroll and an accounts payable account. So any of the warrants that get approved, the money gets transferred in, and then the funds come out of those accounts. We use MMDT for any of our scholarship accounts and one of our investment accounts. And UniBank was our school building bank. We use Cambridge Savings for any of our flexible savings accounts. So it is good to diversify among banks as well. So you don't, you know, oversee the FDIC limit.
And is that the end of the financial reports?
Yes.
That is the end of the quarterly reports, yes.
Steve, do you have an overall comment on the quality of these reports?
No, I've been, I've been, you know, involved with budgets and financial issues for over 40 years. And Nikki does an awesome job, just that it's very clear. And you can tell she's on top of things. And, you know, I think we can sleep well at night knowing that, you know, she keeps an eye on all our expenses. So it's great, really great.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, we're going to talk about the capital stabilization request for the North Building. And Finance Committee met at 5:30 this evening to review a report from Nikki and Michelle Rosendres about that situation. And we did send a copy out to everybody kind of late, so hopefully you have seen it. But I, I think it's important, at least to give a, a brief history of, of the North Building project. Because I think Pam, Alice, Jeff and I are the only ones that are on the committee when, when this whole issue started. And I, I think most of you may, may remember that when we were talking about a new building back, whatever, 10 years ago, whatever it might be, the original design was for a school of over 800. And, you know, some of the communities, especially the ones that pulled out, were looking at a, a school of maybe like 400 and something, maybe 500. And so the building we, we, we have, it was really a compromise, so to speak. And, you know, as we, as we moved into the building, it, it became kind of evident that we didn't have a lot of elbow room for a lot of things. So, you know, back in, in 2022, you know, the school committee kind of decided to look at constructing a north building, primarily for advanced manufacturing. And back in June of 2020, June of 2020, excuse me, the school committee authorized an expenditure from the stabilization fund for athletic fields in the, in the amount of $1,250,000. And then two years later, the school committee approved the North Building in the amount of 823,000, but only appropriated 650,000 from stabilization because it was recommended by Superintendent Quill and that until we get our MSBA reimbursements finalized, we don't know how much would get applied to the fields. So, you know, as, as we know, we had the happy news earlier and had a little, little party that we did get our final MSBA reimbursement. And because of that, the initial stabilization vote for the fields of $1,250,000, actually, we only had to expense 474,481 of that because of, because of the MSBA, which led to a capital stabilization savings of 775,519. So what it came down to is we really needed 233,168.70 to finalize the North Building. And the original estimate of 823,000 has now been lowered to 800,000. So that's all good news. So, you know, we're, we're asking the committee tonight to appropriate the sum of 233,168.70 to complete the building. The building, I believe, is about 1,668, 1,668 square feet. So, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to make that motion so we could have discussion.
The motion from Item F on Number Eight of our budget, of our agenda.
So I, I, I move that the school committee appropriate 233,168.70 from the capital stabilization fund for the purpose of paying the cost to complete the North Building.
Okay.
Okay. So let me just-
I also just wanted to point out that this building will be constructed through both faculty and, and students. So it's, it's going to be a real joint effort of our own, our own folks and, and students to be doing this.
Which is why it's so inexpensive.
Right.
Getting this building for $800,000 because a lot of the work is being done at Minuteman, which is an educational component for the students, of course. And this amount we're allocating is not like an overage or anything like that. It's the, it's the, the price that we knew from the beginning of this project from several years ago. We're just allocating it now because of the timing of the closure of the project. So it's not like there's a big overage and that's why we got it covered. This was all anticipated. We're just paying for it now instead of earlier because of deliberate timing, waiting to the end of the, the closure of our building project.
And the, and the other good news is, at the end of the report, Nikki has put together kind of a, the balance of the capital stabilization fund. So we are anticipating by the end of this fiscal year to have about $3.7 million in, in the stabilization fund, which those of you who were present at the beginning of this would remember that, you know, we, we know we're going to have to replace the, the fields themselves in another probably 10 years or thereabout. So this is all good news. And, you know, once again, I think there's a lot of creativity went, went into planning this North Building. And I, I just think it's, it's terrific. And as I said, the Finance Committee recommends the appropriation.
Pam?
I just want to say how exciting it is to be able to move forward on this.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions on this allocation? Very well then, bring it to a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matiku Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven, yes.
Alice Luca, yes.
Very good.
Includes the finance report.
And it's a finance report, and it completes the North Building, which is actually a milestone for us as well. Very good. Item Nine, Subcommittee's Reports. We got a double dose of Alice, we're starting with the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to do this on my iPad, then I'm, I'm going to make you all disappear and find my document, hang on. Okay, so the Policy Subcommittee met on, let's see, it was the 8th. And just so you know, it's Sharon and me and Superintendent Driscoll, Assistant Superintendent Perro and the Business Manager Nikki. And I'm going to say your name wrong, Nikki, what, how do you pronounce it?
Andrade, thank you.
Thank you, Andrade, I wanted to say Andrade. Okay, so, so anyway, we, we worked on a couple of policies just to look at them regarding purchasing authority and bidding requirements. And those are, have been reviewed already by the Finance Subcommittee. They're going to go back and check a few legal references and, and things like that. But these are things that relate to changes that are being made at the state level, and we are going to have to update our policies. And then we talked about a proposed policy, a policy review process. So the superintendent has developed several folders on OneDrive. These are for the policies that are in, up for review, those that are in progress, those that are ready for first reading, for second reading, that are already approved by the school committee and ready to add to the manual, and those that are archived just for reference. So we, this is a new system. This is going to be, Assistant Superintendent Perro is going to be the administrator liaison to the Policy Subcommittee, and she's going to lead this process from the district. And as you recall, we were working on Section I, which is mostly about students and instruction and education. Those policies, we worked on the last year, as you'll recall. Those policies are all going to be put into the for-review section of our new system. And I'm hoping that this is going to be a really great change. All the edits we've made at the meetings online using Drive. And I think that we will see a big improvement in our ability to move through these more quickly. As you know, we have a ton of them. We don't need to have as big a ton of them. So that's another thing that Superintendent Driscoll was going to look into is how many of these are absolutely unnecessary and are just there. So we'll get rid of those. Then we also had a long discussion about a policy on public comment at the request of the Chair. And we are going to have another discussion on that, probably. We're going to meet the next time on November 19th. And I look forward to working with this team, which is a great team. So that's all I have to say about policy. Mr. Chair?
Any questions or comments on the policy report? You're going to be seeing a lot of stuff from them in the future, so I hope you like reading. Now, I think you're going to find this capital planning subcommittee report especially interesting, Alice DeLuca.
Okay, so hello again, everybody. So you'll recall that when the building was in the completion stage, we talked about how we wanted to develop a plan to ensure that our building and its systems and equipment would be maintained and not fall into disrepair, the way most school buildings tend to do. Most school buildings are put up, they're supposed to have a 50-year lifespan. Then there's some kind of economic catastrophe or some dip in the economy, and all of a sudden, no maintenance goes on for several years. And pretty soon, it's been 20 years and you have to do a major renovation. So we decided we did not want to be that school. And we have four things that we tried to do to keep from being that school to show, to sort of be, be a better operation. So one was we began saving money, which Nikki talked about, towards the anticipated cost of the tenure replacement of the athletic fields. We approved the establishment of a capital stabilization fund, I believe, in 2013. So it's been 10 years, more than 10 years. And then in May of 2024, you all were around, most of you, when the district hired OnSite Insight to do a capital needs assessment and replacement reserve analysis for our property, property and assets. And that was a firm recommended by Ford Spalding and Maggie Sharon, who both have had experience with this firm and their work at Dover Sherburne. So in 2020, the fourth thing was the school committee adopted a policy, only one sentence, which was that the school committee requires that the district perform an annual facilities audit, which will yield a dollar amount for a fully funded capital maintenance plan. And that was done because of what I described earlier, leading to the decay of physical infrastructure and assets in schools. And we have to thank former members Jim Gammel and Dave Horton, who worked hard on this to create that very concise sentence to achieve our goal. So then we made commitments, as was already described to the member towns, that rental fees, rental fees would lower some of the expenses of the district. And at our meeting, we learned, as you did tonight, that 239,000 roughly was being journaled into reserve account towards our commitment for Item One, the fields, and the anticipated replacement of those fields. And we learned that the rental revenue streams from the fields of gym and the classrooms are all held separately within the reserve account so that the amounts coming from each source are clear. And please correct me if I'm making any mistakes. The Subcommittee reviewed a preliminary draft of the OnSite Insight report. So this report exists. And the report in its current form includes the entire campus, its fields and the outbuildings, but it does not include specialized shop equipment assets nor the complete IT infrastructure. And the reports on those two other areas are being created internally. And that will be part of the whole report that will be shared with the school committee when it's all complete. But we will have an accurate description of everything that we have and what it, when we expect to have to spend money on it. And we will be able to project, as the towns do, in which years we anticipate needing to replace equipment and in which years the expenses will be routine and when they will be extraordinary. And so that maybe we can do some smoothing out along the way and not have extraordinary years, or maybe predict a few things and, you know, maybe get ahead of a few things. And it also can inform insurance needs. So this is a huge, huge milestone, and I'm really looking forward to our next meeting, which I believe is in mid-November. The other thing I wanted to briefly mention was that, you know, there was a dock strike. And we were all thinking about the dock strike and is that going to affect Minuteman and stuff? And the superintendent had already checked that it was not affecting Minuteman. You know, we had already done our building projects and the districts that were in the middle of the MSBA projects might have had some supply chain difficulties. If that had gone on, that Minuteman was not in danger, but she had already checked that. So, you know, that is, that is the kind of professionalism that is very exciting to see. And the whole thing is just very exciting to me. Thank you. And the whole thing is just very exciting to me. Thank you.
Now, it's just, I mentioned to the school committee your uh, view of the quality of the reports that we hired out from that, from that company.
Oh, they're very good. This was the first draft, you know, there was, there was a lot of material in there and um. There's gonna be questions uh, submitted by um. The district, the administration is gonna fine tune it and um, ask for some refinements. You know, there are some places where. There are some extreme years projected, maybe, maybe they'll take a look at those things. Um, they're gonna come back with refined uh, numbers and. Um, you know, we're gonna actually see um. Year to year, what do you have to put away in order to maintain the buildings and. And the equipment that runs them. And as you go along through the cycle of the building, you're gonna find that some of the equipment. Is um, you know, a, a whole new technology has come into play or something that's gonna change the pricing. Um, or other, other things like supply chain and stuff like that. But these are estimates, real, real estimates. And when you get closer to the time when you're actually gonna have to spend the money, then you can do a deeper dive to figure out. You know, exactly how much money is this really gonna cost right now in time? But these are, these are pretty interesting estimates. They look pretty good and. Um, I'm, I'm happy. I'm happy. I think it's gonna be great. I'm so, so pleased that we're moving forward with this.
Okay, comments and questions, school committee members? So taking on this responsibility of maintaining the building is something that a lot of schools do not do because it adds. Uh, expenses to their bottom line in the short term. But it will, uh, will uh, prevent your facility from deteriorating over time. And prevent you from having to replace it prematurely. And that requires some longer term thinking than a lot of organizations are able or willing to do, but we're, we're taking this on. And this report and the work of the committee this year is creating the foundation of how we're going to do this. This is. Really a critical component for the long-term financial uh, stability of the school. Does that complete your capital planning subcommittee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Shaleen Cabral Legislative Subcommittee Report. Did you do anything this, this month, Shaleen?
Um, so we, uh, obviously we did those letters on MTEST and um. And on the uh, extension of the remote participation. Um, which were approved by the full school committee. Um, we don't have a scheduled meeting at this time, but we will be in touch. Um. Alice has stepped down from the committee because she was only on there temporarily. Linda, as our new member, is stepping in. So we are gonna be coordinating our schedules to set up a new meeting soon. Um, to review what is going on with seventy-four, after seventy-four schools, issues that are affecting after seventy-four schools. And also um, Superintendent is going to be speaking on. A new campus share situation between Whittier and um. North Essex Community College. So um, you know, there, we're gonna be discussing um, some of these new things that are happening so that we can bring them to the school committee and um. Make some further decisions about the direction that the um, legislative subcommittee will be going in.
Very good. Let's not let anything that's important to us go whizzing by. Without us understanding it and maybe having our say, which is basically what we want to have here. This is a. Strong cooperation between the uh, school committee and the administration. We're both partners in um. Moving this item forward. We're about to have strong interest in it.
The only other thing I was gonna add is that um, we have the MASC, MASSS meeting, I'm sorry, conference in a couple of weeks. So that should produce some interesting points as well.
Did that conclude your report? Any fi- final questions or comments on this report before we move on? Very well then, the final item on our agenda, next to final item. Is an executive session. For this executive session, we are gonna move into executive session, but we are going to return to open session. Now, we have a separate link for the executive session. So when we are done with. This, when we take the vote, you'll uh, school committee, you'll leave this meeting. You'll go to the executive session link. We'll have our executive session on that link. When that meeting is done, we'll close that one down and we come back to the original link. Return to open session. There's only one item. Uh, and I believe that we, and um, uh. I do, I believe that we want uh, uh, Julia and yourself to join us. Is that correct? The school committee, okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh, um. Ask for a motion. To enter executive session. Including the school committee, Julia and the superintendent. To return to open session. For the following reason. To conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, Dr. Amy Perrow. Do I have a motion in a second on that, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, very well then, we'll go straight to a roll call vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigou Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Think uh, Steve is next. Steven, you're on mute, I think.
I know, sorry about that. Steve will do conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Karen Mosto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendiden, yes.
Host Luca Stowe, yes.
Very good then, school committee members. I'll see you on the other link. Is that all of us? Are we all here now? Very good. Uh, I would like a motion to approve the contract for Dr. Amy Perrow as the su- Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Effective November first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Sharon's so moved.
Very good. Discussion. Very well then, uh, bring it to a roll. Uh, yes, Sharon.
I was just gonna say, Amy, thank you for being willing to take on this massive responsibility in this role. We're thankful.
Thank you. I'm grateful to be able to do it.
We've lost the superintendent.
Oh dear. Uh, we don't need her for the vote, actually.
She's back.
We could vote it and then pretend we didn't, you know, to give her a, you know.
A- Amy's here. She'll, she'll let her know, I'm sure.
So Amy, the only comment I want to make is uh, keep in mind how long that executive session was to. Come to our decision. That should tell you something, right?
Yes.
All right, well then, uh, uh, it has been moved and we'll give the uh, the superintendent one more minute to um, actually show up. So she can be here for this. Well, she may have to leave and come back again. She's having trouble. Yep. Haha, she'll be coming back.
There.
Oh, this is, okay, very good. So uh, moved and seconded, roll call vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigou Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Mosto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendiden, yes.
Host Luca Stowe, yes.
Very good. The vote is unanimous. Amy, uh, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Position. We're all happy that you have decided to take this on.
I'm excited to work with Superintendent Driscoll. I think we can do a lot of really exciting things.
Uh, that's why our executive session was so short because you agree. Very well then, I think that our uh, work for today is concluded. Could I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matigou Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbison Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Sharon Mosto Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendiden, yes.
Host Luca Stowe, yes.
Thank you all, everybody. Covered a lot of stuff.
Everybody, thank you.
Night.
All right.
Good night all.
Good night.